The Council of Wycliffe City Council meeting on March 11th. Sue, please call the roll.
Yandelolo.
Here.
Boggo.
Present.
Jaworski.
Here.
Kowski.
Here.
Lavon.
Here.
Sackus.
Here.
Saloto.
Here.
Mayor, can you swear in two full-time firefighters?
Correct.
I start with Kevin. Sue.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Yeah.
You need to turn. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Kevin Igarashi.
I. Oh, sorry.
I, Kevin Igarashi, do solemnly swear.
I, Kevin Igarashi, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Wycliffe.
And the laws and the Charter of the City of Wycliffe.
And that I will, in all respects.
And I will, in all respects.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As a full-time firefighter.
As a full-time firefighter.
Of the City of Wycliffe Fire Department.
Of the City of Wycliffe Fire Department.
During my continuance and set office.
During my continuance and set office.
Eric. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Eric Elchason.
I, Eric Elchason.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Wycliffe.
And the laws of the Charter of the City of Wycliffe.
And that I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respects.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As a full-time firefighter.
As a full-time firefighter.
Of the City of Wycliffe Fire Department.
Of the City of Wycliffe Fire Department.
During my continuance and set office.
During my continuance and set office.
Congratulations. I just want to wish both these young men well on their careers. They've already been with us, both as part-time. We're very excited. As the turnover continues, we had two young, two great young men that were ready to come on full-time. Chief, do you have anything to say?
You know, it's a good day for us when we can take two of our part-timers and move them up to the full-time position. But it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do this if we didn't pass that levy last fall. With the support of the community, council, and the mayor, we did pass that levy. So we continue to hire firefighters. Without firefighters, we can't deliver those services that we critically need in the city. And we're hiring firefighters for the first time ever. So it's a good thing. I'd like to recognize Tom Rapids back there. He's one of our retirees. Tom. We're confident we made the right selection in these two young men. And we're very pleased to have them on our department.
Okay, election of Council Clerk Protemp.
Mr. Council President.
Councilman Jaworski.
I shall move to nominate Sue Eifelies as Council Clerk Protemp.
By Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilwoman Kowski to elect Sue Eifelies, the Council Clerk Protemp. Discussion. Sue, please call the roll.
Yandelolo.
Yes.
Boggo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kowski. Lavon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Approval of council minutes. Council President. Councilman Melo. Second. Make the motion to approve council minutes. Moved by Councilman Melo, seconded by Councilman Boggo, to approve the council meeting minutes of February 25th. Discussion. Sue, please call the roll.
Yandelolo.
Yes.
Boggo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kowski.
Yes.
Lavon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Reports of communications from the Mayor Safety Director.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. There are two items I would like to add into the Legislation and Welfare Committee. One was in regards to garage sale permits, a very small change. Wanted to bring to everyone's attention. And then also for the Shared Economic Development Manager. I guess where we're at with that, I've had a conversation with the other mayors and Commissioner Serena just last week, discussing the structure of how we have this set up. Monica's working out, working on great for myself, the city, and the other two mayors. What we're looking to do is just have that relationship through one of the cities instead of the Port Authority, just to be more efficient. She should spend more time in the communities rather than going out to Painesville. The resources are still there if we need them. But I would like to have that discussed in committee, as we would have to alter the contract. I know we, I mentioned to Councilwoman Saloto, if we can meet on the 18th after our currently scheduled meeting. The Charter Review Commission, they have finished their task and delivered a report to Council President last week, which I know he'll be bringing up to bring into committee. I can say from the handful of folks that I talked to, the conversations I had, and the couple of meetings that I attended, they were extremely thorough. They were very diligent. They researched several other communities' charters, pros and cons, went back to why did, why was these issues in the charter in the first place? Had a lot of outside conversations. So I feel they were extremely thorough in that, in that process. Besides the day-to-day, really it's been focusing my time on meeting with business owners, property owners, and commercial realtors, just to, again, explore opportunities, try and bring people together as much as I can. On Friday, actually had a conversation with a commercial realtor, a gentleman that represents a housing company, who, the company owns a property on Sun Avenue, which is almost right across from the tapestry. It's almost a three-acre lot. It's currently zoned commercial. The owner thinks it would be a good opportunity for some type of multi-tenant housing, or to provide services that might complement the tapestry. Yet many of the ideas we discussed would require a change in zoning. And when it got to the point of referendum zoning, you can almost sense the frustration and the amount of time it would take for someone who owns a small property that might need some more flexibility. So again, just to reiterate, I have a conversation like this almost every week, where there might be a two, or three, or four-acre parcel or something, that a zoning change would make things easier for those smaller properties. We're still exploring things. I put him in touch with some folks from the McKinley Outreach Center, try and hopefully make some connections there. And that's, you know, I actually had a conversation with folks in regards to part of the city-owned property behind Liberty Gardens. They thought some kind of townhomes would work well there. Again, I said, hey, let's just take a look at some drawings and see what might happen, something. Just try to gauge more interest in that, in that area, drive more activity there, and figure out what we can do, what's best going to work in that area. So we're just exploring a lot of different, different avenues in that regard. But that's been the focus the past, the past month or so, again, besides this day-to-day operations. And yeah, that's, that's all I have this evening.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Jaworski.
Just one. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the Economic Development Director. And when does that contract actually end?
It's at least another year, I believe. Because I think we started it in, it'll be a year this June or July. And it was for a two-year, two-year period. So it really wouldn't be changing much but the structure of, essentially, like to have her employed by one of the three cities for the City of Wycliffe compared to the Port Authority. Again, just for efficiency purposes, would be really the only, the only change. But nonetheless, that's why.
Yeah, I just, so, one of the cities would employ her, but we would still share with the other cities?
Correct, correct. And they would just reimburse.
Like sublet from us, or?
Well, I mean, how it works now is, I mean, when she's in here, we're either in my office, sitting here, or she sets up at the end of the table here. So that, the time she's spent in the city would only increase a little bit, because she wouldn't be going to an office in Painesville once or twice a week. She was going up to Painesville once or twice a week, in addition to Wycliffe, Willowick, and Kirtland. And it was just, it wasn't efficient. But we didn't know. And starting this process, we figured the Port Authority would be the best place to have a conduit for benefits and pay. Six, seven months in, it doesn't make so much sense. They just want to essentially just cut out one party. So we still have same services, probably a little increased. And then the other cities, let's say if she was employed by Wycliffe, Willowick and Kirtland would pay us their third, as they are now.
I will add garage sale permits to the Legislation and Welfare Committee, and Shared Economic Development to the actually committee as a whole. Any other questions or comments for the Mayor Safety Director? Reports of communications from the Director of Law.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I don't have any reports of communications from Council this evening.
Questions or comments for the Law Director? Thank you, Mr. Zeeley. I have communications from the Council President. I have none. Any amendments or additions to the agenda? Under New Business, A, a put Charter Review Commission Report. Are there any other amendments or additions to the agenda? If not, move on to the Administrators. Please Chief Ice.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to my monthly report, just a couple of items, just to call the council's attention again. I'm sure some of the stuff you've probably seen in the news as of recent. I thought I'd bring it up just in case, to remind you, in case you have any questions about any of these incidents. You know, we had, Ohio Savings Bank was robbed in February 23rd. We've since arrested the person that robbed that bank, one in Eastlake and one in Cleveland. It was a past school assistant, you know, who actually used to live in that building. So he's currently in jail on bond. And then on March 2nd, we had a four-month-old child that was suffocated by his mother by accident. She woke up in the middle of the night to feed her baby. She fed the baby, and then she fell back asleep, and the baby got pressed against the side of her body and suffocated. And I'm sure everybody's aware of the accident down at Wycliffe Lanes. That was been in the news and on Facebook, so I don't think I need to go into more detail about that. But if you have any questions about where that's at, I'll certainly get, happy to answer those. And we're also investigating, we arrested a 52-year-old man for sexual misconduct violation against his adult daughter. And I believe he is currently out in Lake County Jail. Those are some of the highlights of what's happened over the last few days. There are a couple of other things, but I will cover those details. So I will conclude my report this evening.
Any questions in the Council, please Chief. Thank you, Chief Ice. Or Chief Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. In addition to my monthly report, and as Chief I alluded to, you know, it was a terrible week for all of us. And, you know, often we see terrible things, and quite often we see senseless things. And this just, it's hard to wrap sense around. Our guys worked on those two victims very strongly, and they do a really great job. Unfortunately, despite everything else, sometimes things are insurmountable. On a bright spot, though, we were able this week to give another person a second chance in life. And that she arrested, and she walked out of the hospital six days later. So it's almost, she walked out today. So it was, it was a good thing. Council President, with your approval, I'd like to request we explore the possibilities of looking into, if it's ever needed, it's never been needed, but there's always that possibility, of looking into an employee assistance plan for our part-time police and firefighters. Currently, we do not have a plan, and I think we could probably come along with something if we could put it in committee and look into it. We're still experiencing some problems with workers' compensation. We have two employees out, long-term injuries. And it's not problems, it's just a long, archaic system that takes a while for us to get through. Our calls are up 19% over last year right now. That's pretty significant, 19% in the last two months. And then I'd like to share with you another good thing. The Ladies Auxiliary for the Wycliffe Eagles gave us a donation. They wanted to do something good. And we were short on, believe it or not, blankets. You know, we go to the emergency scenes, and we don't have blankets to hand out. Well, they, they were able to give me enough blankets to put in a couple in every police car, every fire apparatus, so that when we come on some really of these bad motor vehicle accidents, or house fires, and we have people standing out in the elements, we try to get them into a neighbor's house, but often people want to stay outside, we have a blanket to get to them. And we really appreciate the Wycliffe Eagles. Ladies Auxiliary are stepping up, and they want to do something good for the community. And this was their idea, and we certainly are thankful for it. That concludes my report.
And Chief, I will put Employee Assistance Plan for Part-Time Employees in the committee of the whole.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the Fire Chief? Councilman Melo.
Yes, Chief Powers, we have, my employment, we have Employees, which is a very well-used resource for employees going through different types of hard times, financial, they do a lot of planning, stuff like that. So that's a, that's a great resource we want to be around.
Thank you.
Any further questions in the Council for the Fire Chief?
Thank you, Chief Powers.
My next Director Dolz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have any report in addition to my monthly financials, which I sent out last week.
Any questions or comments for the Finance Director? Councilman Jaworski.
Looking at the, at the numbers, if I did the math right, we're right now down about $300,000.
Yes, that is correct.
And that takes into account that $100,000, that was a reimbursement for the, for the income tax overpayment?
Yes, they did make the first payment on that. Last year at the end of February, from last year at the end of February, we're actually down in, in income tax collections, $221,000. But that does also include that $100,000 that already went out for this first quarter.
I had also noticed in the numbers that the, maybe this is more of a question for Chief Ice or for you, I guess whichever one wants to answer. But it looked like the Police Department, General Fund expenses were around 92%, 93% at this point in time?
There is, I can take that. Because they're in a different fund right now, and that, you know, we haven't gotten our tax disbursement for the levy, and we're supplementing them. I am, I'm trying to be, make sure they have enough money in the fund to operate, but not over, overly tax the general fund by doing more supplemental transfers than I have to.
Okay, it'd be the same thing for the Police Department, or the Fire Department?
Yes, yeah, it's all in that same safety first service.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the Finance Director? Thank you, Ms. Dolz. City Engineer Fumiga.
Thank you, Council President. I have nothing to add to my written report. However, I'd like to request a meeting of the appropriate committee to discuss the Wycliffe-owned property that is currently the Lake Tran Park and Ride Facility.
Okay, we will add the Lake Tran Park and Ride Facility to the committee of the whole. Is there any more, is that the end of your report, sir?
That, that is what I'm.
Any questions or comments for the City Attorney? Thank you, Mr. Fumiga.
Thank you.
Service Director, the Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. All is well in Service Department. It was a little bit of a lull with the snow. We're actually catching up on some of our lawn mowers, working on those. The Greenridge Golf Course, working on a lot of their equipment, trying to get that stuff ready. The Maple Street project is doing along great. They're still accommodating the residents very well, especially with the garbage trucks going down there. They're moving the trash cans from across the street if necessary. We notified our third shift this morning, that this will be the last week for third shift. They'll be on days next week. We're going to continue second shift, though. We're going to keep them on for probably another couple of weeks. We're still trying to finish some of the building maintenance that we started. And then the waterline project that's starting at Sheerbrook and going to go through Colby Park. They started trimming the trees today, actually cutting down trees. We got a few calls from some of the residents up there. I spoke to the contractor. They're hauling everything away. So if you get any calls, you can either refer them to me, or just let you know that they did start that project. And that concludes my report.
Any questions in the Council for the Service Director? Councilman Jaworski.
Joe, with that last round of snow that we had, are we still in good shape with our salt?
Yes, sir, very good shape. Yes.
Are we going to able, are we able then to meet the contract requirements for this year?
We, yes, we're probably going to, we're shooting for the 9%. You know, I think we're going to, I think we're going to be at that. We should be good. I mean, obviously we don't know what's going to happen, but right now, we're right on target to get that. We should be good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions in the Council for the Service Director? Thank you, Mr. Fumiga. The only Commissioner Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just have one thing to add to my written report. I hope to have in front of Council next meeting, new sign ordinance to put in for review. And that's all I have.
Any questions in the Council? Councilman Jaworski.
Ray, can the budget look like we're already at 62% of the fees for permits at this point in time of the year? Did I read that?
I don't.
I was reading the wrong line.
I don't have that in front of me, Councilman Jaworski. If we were that far, I wouldn't be able to be here tonight.
No, I was just wondering. I think it was.
I don't have a copy of that.
807-407-04.
62% on the revenue, which is a good thing. We hope we exceed it.
Thank you.
Any further questions in the Council? Thank you, Mr. Zach. Recreation Director Stock.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just one thing to add to my written report. We are looking for some help at Greenridge. We're missing about the three college kids that aren't coming back this summer. So we have our ad on the website, we'll put it on Facebook. So if you know, any hard-working college, even high-school-age students who aren't afraid to tackle a weed whacker and hop on a mowing machine, we need some good workers.
Any questions in the Council for the Recreation Director? Thank you, Mr. Stock. Yep. Economic Development Director, Ray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just got back into the country, so my report's going to be short. I just want to let you know, I met with both the city's mentor and Willoughby for assistance on vacant parcels. They're providing me access to their online tools that I'll be able to upload information for properties that are either for sale or for lease in the various cities. So I'll be working with getting those uploaded onto the website. Also, I had put together a PowerPoint presentation. I had the Law Director and Mayor review it. And it's ready to be sent to the council members. And it provides statistics and facts and figures on just process, and that I believe will be helpful. I asked you to review some of the recommendations from the Charter Review Committee. If you have any questions?
Any questions in the Council, please? Thank you, Ms. Ray. I'll now open the floor to audience participation. If anyone would like to address Wycliffe City Council, please stand, state your name and address for the clerk's record. Each person will have a five-minute maximum amount of time. Would anyone like to address Wycliffe City Council?
Hi, I'm Mayor Rich Regret, sir, Willowick. Good evening, everybody. And I'm here just to talk about some of the things that we're doing similar in Willowick. I think our collaboration with Monica Drake has been fantastic. Part of the reason why Mayor Barberish and I are happy she's not, no longer has to go to Painesville to work with the port is because we get more of our time. And I think that's going to be very successful. We are very similar in our ordinances and charter, in that we are going to change our zoning, so get rid of, rid of zoning too. We want to be more in line with the cities like Eastlake, Willowick, Manner, who are able to compete for business and not have to wait a year, year and a half to have something changed, to have a business come in. People don't wait that long anymore. The way we are doing ours is to have planning commission review it. So there's a meeting of planning commission review, and a mandatory three meetings at council, so that the people still have their voices heard, and has had time to vet the process. So something that would take up to a year and a half, depending on the voting cycle in that, in that particular time, could now go down in three, two, three months, hopefully, and still have the voices heard. I'm excited about the future. We work well together as mayors in all Western Lake County here. It's, it works, it's been happening in police and fire for a long time. It's about time that the mayors and then the other departments do that. So I just wanted to come and tell you that I think it's a good thing. It's, it's an exciting time. We're businesses flourishing and growing right now. It's a good time to take advantage of the areas that we have too, just like your Euclid Avenue corridor, we have our Vine Street corridor, and part of Euclid Avenue, that we would all love to see getting changed and fixed up, and bring the type of businesses and get things happening in our city. So I just want to come here tonight and tell you that. And if anybody ever has a question for me or Willowick, my phone's always available, and I'd be happy to help out any way I can.
Would anyone else like to address Wycliffe City Council? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Courtney Porter. My business partner, George Beter, and I are opening a coffee shop at 29933 Euclid Avenue. It's going to be called Couchland Coffee House. It used to be Classic Rock Coffee Co. a couple of years ago. So we just wanted to stop by and introduce ourselves, and let you guys know what we're doing. And I heard there's a little buzz going around about it, and some people are curious what's going in there. So it is another coffee shop, and yeah, so we just wanted to say hi. And we are posting tonight up on our windows that we are starting to hire. So if you guys know anybody who's interested, they can apply on the website. We have a website. My partner here is a web developer, so.
Still is.
Yeah, still is. So yeah, so if you guys have any questions or anything, stop by, so.
Yeah. Welcome. Welcome, we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
When did you say you guys are opening?
Well, we're aiming for the end of April.
Because I get a lot, so people have heard and are very excited.
Okay, great.
And there's great news.
Good.
Great. Yeah, and our, our theme is, as you can tell, our name is Couchland. So our vibe is like leather couches, comfy place to come drink a cup of coffee, read a book. We're going to have books, avail, used books for people to read. You can bring your own, or you can read one of ours. So yeah, it's going to be kind of like that old-school coffee house kind of vibe.
Loungy.
Loungy, live music. If you'd like to have, you know, open mic night kind of thing, once in a while. Yep. So. We're, we're close, yeah, like across the street from Sweetberry, almost. Yeah.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address Wycliffe City Council? Yes, sir, the Director.
Hello, my name is Greg Gell. I recently bought a property in Wycliffe, on Lloyd Court. And I wanted to come to council today, which I just found out, because I've reached out to Mr. Zach, Patty Leovick, and the Law Director, without any true response or clarity. Once we bought this property, we didn't realize about the sewer dye test. I'm the buyer. And I received a letter stating that I needed to perform this test. So I didn't know anything about it, so I got a copy of the ordinance. I read it, I read it carefully. And it seemed to be really clear that the seller does this. So I wanted some clarity from Mr. Zach, which he only gave me kind of like boilerplate information. I own and manage real estate for a living, and all of our business is in Northeast Ohio. We run over 400 properties. So I'm, I'm in Ohio, I'm not a full-time resident. I grew up in Wycliffe, went to Wycliffe schools. My family's lived in Wycliffe forever, still live in Wycliffe. My first house is in Wycliffe. I bought another house in Wycliffe, and I could have bought it in any city, any city. So I chose to come back to Ohio and buy in Wycliffe for peace. The, this process has turned my taste of Wycliffe to a level that I never thought I would go. Since finding out about this dye test, I just found out a couple of days ago that your Law Director filed a criminal charge against me. I didn't even know about it. They sent the information to another home that I used to own, not even to the tax mailing address, to this house in Wycliffe. I found out only because I hadn't heard back from them when I requested this information. So I'm going to be brief. I'm going to leave the rest of my details open if anybody wants to reach out to me. But I am going to say this, if this case isn't dismissed, I will represent myself pro se. I will subpoena every record that you ever filed. I am going to file a disciplinary, to a disciplinary council against your Law Director, and I will go after his law license. I'm very upset, and I'm here personally. I'm not here on business, but it's an absolute disgrace. So we got the opportunity to communicate, like I've tried to do since December, and it's very, very poor and neglectful for what they've done. it's very, very poor and neglectful for what they've done. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address Wickliffe City Council? Anyone else like to address Wickliffe City Council? That will mark audience participation close. Committee reports? Do you want to call out legislation?
Yes, I'm, yes, I would like to call a legislation and welfare committee for the 18th.
Okay, and parking out lawns and the garage sale permits?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll add that to March 18th agenda after the committee of the whole meetings?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I will call a committee of the whole meeting for April 1st to discuss shared economic developer, EAP for part-time employees, and the Lake Tran parking ride facility, so that'll be April 1st at 7:00 PM, committee of the whole. Any other committee reports? Commission reports? The Board of Zoning Appeals, approved a variance in the case 2019-01, last Thursday, for PCC Airfoils SMP plant to build an addition on the west side of their building. Any other commission reports? Any old business? I've now moved to new business, A, charter review commission report, I received today in my mailbox, the review, their, their letter from Mr. Ivansik, and so I will distribute this out to you guys, and we'll meet this, on this, again, on April 1st, so, just wanted to bring that out. Or actually, I would add, I have to add it to the charter review commission report to the committee of the whole. So a charter review commission report, add to committee of the whole, and I'll add that to our April 1st meeting as well. Ordnances.
Ordance number, excuse me, ordinance number 2019-18, an ordinance authorizing the director of finance of the city of Wickliffe, Ohio, transfer sums of money from various funds to others, first reading.
Resolutions.
Resolution number 2019-03, a resolution expanding the city of Wickliffe community reinvestment area to further include all of the residential, commercial, and industrial properties within the corporation limits of the city, and amending financial allowances for said community reinvestment area, second reading.
Any other, other legislation? Miscellaneous, Councilman Dorski.
I would just ask, we had a wrestler finish third in the state of Ohio.
Fifth.
Fifth, I'm sorry. I think it would be wonderful if we had a resolution to honor him at the student government day for his achievements, a two-person wrestling program, to do something like that, I think is just an amazing task, and it's not often that we get to recognize any of our high school sports teams or an individual for state excellence.
Any miscellaneous, Councilman Dorski? We're looking to do that. Any other miscellaneous? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, Council President?
Second, moved by Councilman Yanilolo, seconded by Councilman Bogo to adjourn the meeting. Discussion? Sue, please call the roll.
Yanilolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Dorski?
Yes.
Kaski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sappis?